We have a treat. We're going to have a student performance by the McCall Middle School Solo Voci and Heritage Singers. And Johnny Nichols will be leading them, his their teacher. So without further ado, why don't we go ahead?
(applause) Or I'll never fall in love, never fall in love. In a restless world like this is, love has ended before it's begun. And too many moonlight kisses seem to cool in the warmth of the sun. When I give my heart, it will be completely yours. Or I'll never give my heart. And the moment I can feel that you feel that way too. It is when I fall in love. When I fall in love, that's when I fall in love with you. Fall in love with you.
Thank you. That was Solo Voci performing First. It is McCall's first ever a cappella group, getting them prepared and trained for the high school a cappella group called the Achtets. And what's the other one?
Chamber Singers.
Chamber Singers. So getting them prepared for that. These kids are really excited, very talented with the a cappella. And that was When I Fall in Love. And next is Heritage Singers. They are the traditional mixed choir. And they will be singing How Far I'll Go from the motion picture Moana.
I've been staring at the edge of the water as long as I can remember. Never really knowing why. I wish I could be the perfect daughter, but I come back to the water no matter how hard I try. Every turn I take, every trail I track, every path I make, every road leads back to the place I know where I cannot go for long. The line of the sky meets the sea, it calls me. And no one knows how far it goes. If the wind in my sail and the sea stays behind me, one day I'll know. If I go, there's just no telling how far I'll go. I know everybody on this island seems so happy on this island. Everything is by design. I know everybody on this island has a role on this island. Maybe I can roll with mine. I can lead with pride, I can make us strong. I'll be satisfied if we're playing along. The voices inside should be different from what you're hearing. The line of the sky meets the sea, it's lining. But no one knows how far it goes. And it seems like it's flying out to me, so come find me and let me know. Beyond that line, pull across that line. The line of the sky meets the sea, it calls me. And no one knows how far it goes. If the wind in my sail and the sea stays behind me, one day I'll know. One day I'll know.
I can start every meeting that way?
I know.[397.13][397.13](laughing) So folks watching at home, we're going to pause for a few minutes while we regroup. Do you like that we know when you go to parties? When... Do you like that Ellie knows when you're invited to parties?
Yes.
Oh, yay! Well, that was somebody, she's like scrolling through, she's like, do you know? (inaudible) And we're going to recognize you for your many years of dedicated service.
I'm not used to this side of the table.
I know, it's weird, huh? I guess I would just like to lead off by saying that on behalf of the school committee, I'd like to commend and thank Michael Schindlman for 12 years of dedicated and thoughtful service to our schools and to our town. The 12 years from April 20... From April 2005 through March 2017, I'm going to stumble over that all evening, were a dynamic and challenging period that called upon the school committee to guide the district through many, many changes and transitions, both major and minor. Remember, in 2005, Mitt Romney was governor, George W. Bush was president. They were succeeded by Deval Patrick and Barack Obama, who both served two terms, and who then were in turn succeeded by Charlie Baker and Donald Trump. When Michael joined, I mean, that's the background, right? When Michael joined the committee in 2005, the town was in the final stage of building a new Ambrose Elementary School. And it went on to build a major addition to McCall, partnered with the Massachusetts School Building Authority to design and build a new Vincent Owen. And even before completing VO, get approval from the MSBA to move forward to renovate or really completely rebuild and transform the high school. The district has had three superintendents, Jim Marini, Bill McCaldef, and now Judy Evans, which means we had to conduct two superintendent searches. Michael served with a number of hardworking and memorable, wise and dedicated colleagues, Kathy Bodie, Mark Feblowitz, Sarah Girardi, Bob O'Connor, and Sarah Swiger. In terms of student diversity, a topic that Michael raised our awareness and appreciation of, that has grown over the years as well, shifting from 9.5% of our students identifying as non-white in 2005 to 27% today. And the percentage of students for which English is a second language or who are English-language learners has gone from 7% in 2005 to 18% today. And just simply in terms of the overall size of the district, in 2005, enrollment in Winchester was 3,677 students. And the district total expenditures were a bit over $37 million. And those numbers have now grown to expenditures in 2015 well over $58 million. And total enrollment this year of 4,623 students, which if my math is correct, is an increase of 946 students, which is kind of amazing. So, yeah, it's a high school. It's another, yes, more than another school. So again, Michael, thank you for not only guiding the district through many changes, challenges, and innovations, but also being a mentor to me and many others along the way. And not to leave out your tireless work to complete the long overdue update of the school committee policy manual in its entirety, a years-long endeavor which was much needed and which, you know, we'll use for years. So enjoy your Tuesday evenings with your family. We will let you know when the high school ribbon cutting will be. And we really do wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
I suppose maybe I should open this up to someone else if anyone else has anything.
I'd like to say something, if I may.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have a couple of thoughts. In addition to being just an outstanding school committee member and a great resource to all of us, not many people know this, but you've really been a great resource to the average Joes in this town. It's not just about making yourself available to folks with whom you serve. So I began coming to school committee meetings for about a year and a half before I decided to run. And I lost count of how many times I sent Michael an email, let's say at a reasonable time of day, and I got a text message at 11 o'clock at night saying, "I'm up, you want to talk?" And, Michael, you know, you would give me an hour and a half of your time to talk about technology replacement plans or the capital process, just a tremendous amount of energy. And so I thank you for that. You really informed me, and you know, you're one of the reasons I decided to run, because I thought, what a great guy, I'd love to serve with you. The other thing that I just want to point out, that I think we all understand around this table, is this is a grueling job sometimes. So in addition to thanking you, I want to thank your wife, Susan, and I want to thank the boys, because you've given them a lot of your time, and they've been willing to give you up to us for really a number of years. So I really appreciate that. I do hope you enjoy them on Tuesdays.[884.00][884.00](laughing) Thank you all very much. I really appreciate the sacrifice that you guys make so Michael can serve. I mean, I get choked up about it myself sometimes, because there are times when I feel like we sometimes put, you know, family second for the greater good because of some really pressing issue. And it is important, and it affects all of the students in the district, but still sometimes those moments are lost. So I really appreciate it. You've always been ready to step up to the plate, and I'll miss you here at the table.
Anyone else?
Not to drag it out, a lot of things being said are true. I would have said the same thing. I just wanted, funny story about Michael is, Michael has a strange battery that kicks on at 10 o'clock at night. Things can go very late into the evening, as Chris already said. So at your own peril, ask Michael a question after a meeting.[940.00][940.00](laughing) Because it could go on quite a while. But really, what it really means is that Michael has a lot of information, was really a source of all the legacy discussions, decisions, and choices that were made in the committee. And you really sometimes need to drill into those and to get the sort of tone for why we've done something. You're always there to provide those answers. And you're also one of the people in the committee that had a great sense of humor. So in the depths of some of our sort of crisis, you could be relied on to sort of bring back a story about something that happened once before, to provide us a little bit of levity about, this is not the first time, or this is not the last time, but these are certainly things that are part of the job, and everything will be okay. So I really appreciated that. So thank you, Michael.
That's true. It's here, dear. It's here, dear.
So I won't get into how much you know, but rather focus on the other side of you, which is what I learned the most from you, the weepy one over here, is a lot of this job is less about what you know and more about the questions that you ask. And, Michael, I have to say that you taught me more than anyone, that you have to listen for understanding, you have to ask the right questions to get the right answers, and you can't be afraid of what the answers may be that you ask. I've always enjoyed when Michael, it's true, comes to life at 9:30 in the evening, just about the time my Starbucks is wearing out. But really, you bring vitality to this work that it just compares to none, and I'm grateful for everything that you've done, and to call you a friend as well as a colleague. And I hope that the superintendent does not let you sneak away without being recommitted to some committee that I'm sure will benefit from your tireless energy. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just say a couple of things. First of all, we're expecting Representative Day to come and give a little proclamation and recognition of your long and distinguished service. And so I'm sure he's been delayed, or he's perhaps parking down at Starbucks because he can't get any closer with no parking spaces. But I hope he's able to arrive before we wrap this up. And also, having had the privilege of working with you for close to two years, what I most appreciated from you as a school committee member is that you pushed and you asked the question, "How is this innovative? Are we trying hard enough to do good things for kids?" And so that question is always going to be in the back of our minds as we make decisions. We have a lot of big decisions coming up around facilities and school start times and a variety of other things, including homework tonight. And I think it's nice to have a touchstone for someone who did this for a dozen years who can say, "Don't just settle for okay. Don't just settle for mediocre. Push a little bit." And, you know, I think Michael sends me about three or four emails a day still.[1125.13][1125.13](laughing) Have you thought about this? Yeah. And they're always interesting. I always like opening them because your mind works in a unique way, and it opens doors that I think typically those of us who are concrete sequential don't always, sometimes we don't open those doors. So we want to thank you for that. So we're, I'm really pleased that you came tonight so we could recognize you. And I echo what Mr. Nixon said about your family. I think my children's first words weren't "Mom," they were, "Do you have a meeting tonight?" And so I understand the sacrifice that I make, but this is my profession and what I love to do. And as a volunteer, you probably put in 100 nights a year for a dozen years doing a variety of things, and that's extraordinary. And we couldn't just let you slip away without recognizing that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a little scary to think of that, 100 nights, 12 years.
It is.
And they're not just out here tonight, it's actually Susan's birthday.
Yay! Happy birthday, Susan. Happy birthday.
So therefore, you can actually leave in a moment, go celebrate, as opposed to sticking around here tonight, one of the other bonuses.
Make sure you get the proclamation of the gift of Michael.
The gift of Michael. We will find you.
It's meant to be on a Tuesday, we're used to it. Time shift in a lot of things, we've done that for a while now. So you know, I don't have a lot to say, but I do want to thank you all. I have learned a tremendous amount through all of you. If teachers make a lasting impact on the lives of their students, everybody here at the table has made a lasting impact on me, even you, John.[1244.23][1244.23](laughing) Really, you know, an impact on my life, something that I have learned things from each of you that I will carry with me for a long, long time and be able to utilize. And I very much appreciate that. Still unbelievably value what you're doing. You know, I value education. I really think it's, you know, we've heard this before, it opens doors, it creates opportunities. You know, education is probably the most powerful weapon you can use or bring to change the world. And so what you all are working to do will have value that we don't even probably understand or appreciate as we sit here making decisions about homework or school start times and other issues. But I'm very much proud of all of you and love that you're here continuing to try to make life, school and life, and better for our students. All right? And push. You were right, Judy. Continue to push.
Continue to push.
Right? What you're doing, you're like building the passport to our kids' future. And you're laying that groundwork today. So it's important. It will have value for years and years to come. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Well, don't be a stranger.
I will. Thank you.
I guess he hasn't arrived. He's always on his way. Can you stick around for a few minutes? Sure. I know you're going out to a birthday dinner, but when he comes, maybe we can slide him in. Yep, great.
We can do that.
You have to pick up your last paycheck, too.[1359.01][1359.01](laughing) No way.
The last one is doubled, right?
Yeah, it's doubled. Yeah. So I kind of skipped over public comment. Is anyone here for public comment?
Yes.
All right.
Unless somebody else wants to do it. This is, oh, a few different things. So, oh, I'm sorry, one of the passes out. So during Academic Advisory Council, we talked about several ideas, which was a great group. I really enjoyed it. Jen and Pam, Susan, myself and other teachers were on it. And it was a nice opportunity to come together and have good discussions in a non-hierarchical way. And I support any idea that promotes that. So I also wanted to say that I think that what Cindy is doing is terrific with the strategic visioning.
We're doing.
We're doing.
We're all doing.
But you've been out there, you know, out front and whatnot, and talking to people. So, and as a union president, I want to do everything that I can to support that. If you haven't heard already, Anna Paradise is the new union president. I think she's going to be great. Many of you already know her really well. And we have a, we have sort of a, we rewrote the bylaw so that there's a transition period, so she and I will be working together. And then she officially takes over on September 1st. But right now, we're pretty much, you know, having a lot of good discussions, and whatever is coming across my plate is also being shared with her. And I think that's really good. And I think it's great that she's been on the strategic visioning group. So one of the ideas that came up from Academic Advisory Council was this career night, the idea being that we have kids, and I know that we've talked about this, or you guys have talked about this several times at the table, that we don't need to promote more competition with these kids, they have plenty. But to sort of give them the opportunity to step back a little bit and understand that there's a bigger world out there. One of the reasons for doing the career, the pathways for success, was to get across this idea that there are many pathways to success. It's not always linear. It's not always without, you know, detours. And the, what, it was really terrific, I mean, you can read this through, the introduction, you know, gives the background of it, but it was a very successful assembly. It was successful in the sense that it was administration, the teacher group, and the PFA group all working together to, you know, to get it together. And it was successful in the sense that the message, the themes that ran across all six people, one of whom was Karen Conley, who graciously gave us her time. But the variety was interesting, too, with Alana Ritchie, who runs a salon downtown, and Brenda Driscoll, who runs the electric company, Mike Bettencourt, who's a career changer, Karen Conley, who is a career changer, Michael Phelan, who's a local fireman, and Rick Irving, who is, who is still doing counseling therapy in town here. But the takeaway that, you know, your GPA, while it's something to be proud of, is a small part of what you should be thinking about, that there's a much, much bigger world out there, and that in terms of having a good career, it relies as much on intuition and character and passion as it does on a number. And I think that takeaway was very clear to the kids. I talked to some of them after, this was right before vacation, and talking to them after vacation, many of them found it to be comforting, you know? So it was, it was sort of a low-risk format. It wasn't a big job fair, it was a panel discussion. I wish we had more time for Q and A afterwards, but I think the kids got a lot out of it. Now going forward, we can modify it, we can do, you know, what we want with it. It was also really good to get together with the PFA and work on something in common. We've had this PFA group going for the last two years to, you know, build communication channels. And I think that overall, that's worked out pretty well. So, yeah, it was sort of my, my little update. And again, I really look forward to seeing what comes out of this strategic visioning. And Anna and I will try to get the union folks and the members behind that any way we can.
Thank you.
I wanted to say a quick word for Jerry. This was one of his visions, and Mikey Ulwick, also the president of the PFA, they had this idea.
Dennis, sorry, yeah, come.
Yeah, yeah.
Need a mic, sorry. For your audience.
This was a vision of Mikey Ulwick's and Jerry's, that they got together, they got the PFA together, and a bunch of teachers. And it's rare that a vision starts out as one thing and actually is completed as exactly how and what you wanted it to be. And that's exactly the assembly that we got. This was drawn up, we went through several different versions, several different dates as a group and a collaborative effort, and it ended up being exactly what we wanted it to be for the kids. And that's through Jerry's hard work and Mikey's as well, and their vision together, what they want to do to offer an alternative for finding kids' passions and speaking to kids' passions and finding things that they're interested about outside of the normal school day and activities that we offer. So it was really, I just wanted to credit them publicly.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Olivia, a student report. Is there, is anybody else for public comment? If not, let's go ahead with our student report.
I just want you to know I signed your diploma today, so thank you. Ronnie, no.
So can't get it done, you're free to go.
Should I tell Ronnie she didn't? Not yet. I signed her on the certificate. I know, she's not here tonight. I know, I thought you were going to like...
I was going to ask if Olivia could sing her report tonight.
I was just about to say. Don't even expect that. We're coming out of low bar tonight, guys.
Okay.
Really struggle. So seniors are out, and then we just have a bunch of upcoming senior events next week with prom, and then the lu-hau the day after, and then graduation rehearsal the day before, a couple days or so before prom, and then our senior class dinner, which is the day before prom. And then graduation will be the day after Town Day, so that's Sunday. Sports report, a lot of the teams are kind of finding out whether they're going to be in the tournament or not, and if so, their ranking. So that's coming out in the next day or two or a week for some teams. And I just wanted to give a quick shout out, I'm a little biased because of the tennis team, but Brooke Scully and Izzy Bruner are going to be playing in the North Finals this weekend against Wayland, so, in Lexington. So if you can come by or show your support, I know they'd love it. It's a really big deal for the team, we're really proud of them. It's a really big deal for the team, we're really proud of them.
When are they signing?
Saturday morning at, I think, 10:00 or 10:30, yeah. And then the foreign language awards night's going to be going on tomorrow night in the auditorium.
Thursday night, right?
Or, oh, Thursday night, yeah.
Junior awards. Junior awards tomorrow.
Oh, junior awards, right. And then school elections for student council and class officers are going to be happening in early June. And then we'll have an election for school committee within student council after the student council elections. And then there are new student council officers. So David Joseph's the president, so the Josephs are running it in the family. Megan Jens is VP, Stefano Mitsakis is secretary, and Matt Jens is treasurer. So I just wanted to give them a quick shout out. And then your survey for kind of improving or student opinion, yeah, that's been sent out through the Facebook groups for grades, so we're kind of spreading the word to students to get involved and give as much opinions and feedback as possible, so I know it'll help you guys.
Good. Anybody want to ask anything? Nope. She hit it all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia.
Thank you.
See you at graduation.
Yeah. So next up, we have WIFI, Winchester Foundation for Educational Excellence.
And I'm looking to see, is mic day close? Because I don't want you guys to be late for dinner.
I know.
This would be really a sin at this point. No sign of, no sign of mic yet?
Just said it.
Okay, all right.
Lot of traffic. Up.
I heard it.
Up.
It might have been Olivia leaving.
Might have been Olivia leaving.
Oh, okay. This is like waiting for Godot. Well, while we wait, while we wait for Godot.
This is a good report.
This is a good report. Perhaps, Susan, I don't know if you want to start us off, or if you'd like us to go through. Joining me tonight is C.C. Cordera, the co-president of WIFI, and the parent of three Winchester students, including one who is very close to graduating. And I hope Judy signed his diploma today.
I was going to say, don't tell me.
I did. And Susan has signed also.
Okay, okay.
You've signed also.
Okay, good.
So Jen, I don't know if you want to talk about any of the professional development grants or the education grants, but.
This is an annual thing, right? You come in the spring?
Okay.
All right, well, we are delighted to be here, to give you close to $56,000 in funding for both professional development and education grants. I think that one thing we've been very pleased about is we've continued the Power It Up initiative, is seeing how many teachers have still written grants for professional development, and that we have been able to meet those. So if you take a look at the professional development grants, I would say that most of them are, you know, so we have a lot again that deals with literacy. I think that I'd maybe give two special shout outs. One at Morocco, to Irene, who has brought funding to bring in a yoga instructor to work with educators, not directly with the kids, but to work with the educators to give them some tips on mindfulness, meditation, and they'll take back to the classroom. So we thought that was an interesting grant. I think we were also pretty excited about Kim Burke's engaging math students at every level, because I think that supports what the district is trying to do. And Kim, as you know, will do a wonderful job bringing it back to her colleagues. On the education side, you know, there's a grant that I think probably is worth a little bit of discussion, which is that after a great deal of discussion by our board and the Grants Committee, we did decide to give Lincoln School $10,000 for flexible seating. And I think that what we would want this committee to know, and C.C. jump in at any point, because this was the source of a lot of discussion amongst both our Grants Committee and our Board, was, A, you know, is furniture something that an education foundation should be paying for? And some of those furniture grants came with requests for things that we would consider falling into the category of office supplies. And so we rather clearly indicated that that was not something that we wanted to pay for. We chose to look at these grants, although they all came in individually, we looked at them as a unit, and have asked the principal at Lincoln, work with the educators, to decide how they want to split it up. And really, at the end of the day, for us, this was not a grant about how kids sit or where they sit, but it was a grant about how a group of educators have tried to move forward the discussion of differentiation, and how do we meet kids' needs wherever they might be. So that's really the lens in which we are giving this grant. And we give the message to the other elementary principals that if they have a passion and an interest that falls into the area of helping move forward with differentiation, we would welcome to hear from them next year. And if it's furniture, you know, we'll consider that again. If a principal looks at the options that are out there and says, I think we can serve our students' needs in this school more effectively with this, we're also willing to take a look at that.
We also asked Lincoln, too, for some pretty serious feedback on what of this variety of options they found useful, and if it worked for kids, if it annoyed other kids or what have you, but just to give us some, you know, very strong info on, you know, how this worked for them.
You know, and I think the other point that we did want to make, as the district and as the town looks at a planning, a master planning process, and we're looking at what do we do with Morocco, how do we meet the needs of Lynch, it might behoove all of us to take a very close look at what Lincoln and what Lynch has already done to some degree. And if, in fact, this flexible or alternative seating is important to kids' education, then perhaps that should go into the public budget as we determine what we're going to put in these new school buildings that we build or we renovate. So that, I think, is really key to us, because we don't feel like, you know, this is something we want to take on as our life's mission going forward, but that we would hope that it helps provide information for the rest of the district.
Well, I just, I just want to thank you, again, for all of these donations and all the fundraising that you've been doing for years, and also the thoughtful process that you, and evidence-based decision-making that you put into making the grants. It's really important and it really helps us.
Thank you.
So I want to say thank you for your remarks, in particular about Lincoln, because I can appreciate the reservations the board may have had. I think my first five years on the school committee, I was surprised that every year, I think we had $50,000 for furniture replacement on the capital list. It took me five years to realize that'll never get funded through capital, because there are fire trucks that need to be replaced, and snowplows that need to be replaced, and a roof that's leaking at Lynch, so it never makes the cut. But what I hope people appreciate is this is a different kind of furniture, that flexible furniture that can sort of help support some different teaching styles. But we've also been talking about this even with our McCall Phase 1 project, which we're well on our way in schematic design. It's not just about the walls, the doors, the corridors, but what goes in the space, the projectors, and a kind of flexible furniture, that's just what you're talking about. So we've got something cooking there at the middle school level as well. So this is terrific, and I'm eager to hear what they find from this sort of donation.
I also want to echo what Susan said, that I really appreciate the, that you acknowledged that you'll be going back to Lincoln to look to see what's working and what's not working, and really the data-driven decision-making about this, because this really provides us a nice opportunity to see, actually in the classroom, what works, and how the teachers are able to manage it.
Anything else?
Yeah, so the mindfulness grant, I feel like we're, there's a lot of pockets of work being done around mindfulness. Are you, are you working with Carolyn around sort of long-term strategy and how to bring that together? Or how do you balance sort of system-wide efforts, like we did with technology, with someone's going to try it over here one way, we're going to try it over here another way?
Well, I think that's part of what we do, do a lot of balancing and juggling. And we had even considered, does alternative seating need to be a system-wide initiative? And, you know, we spoke with Dr. Evans and Jen about that, in the sense was, well, maybe not so much. Maybe if you take that on as a system-wide initiative, if that's not what each of the principals is looking for, you're forcing people into a box they don't want to be in. I think that, you know, as WIFI finishes Power It Up, and I hope that in a month or so, I'll be sitting back here and giving you the good news that the road race was a huge success, teacher tribute was a huge success, and we can fund the remainder of that grant. WIFI continues to discuss amongst ourselves and then with the administration, what are the big things, are there big things that you want us to fund? And we have looked at mindfulness and social-emotional, and we've talked to Carolyn some, I think we'd like to talk to her more. I think we continue to struggle a little bit with that, with the concept of what is social-emotional, and how are we going to measure it? You know, I think that there were some unexpected benefits to Power It Up. It really brought collaboration to another level in the district. It has moved the district forward with project-based learning. We didn't necessarily know those things were going to happen. What we did know was, we were going to have a metric and a way to measure it. And I could come back here at some point and say to you, you know, so what happened to the 2,000 Chromebooks we bought? How come those aren't being used? With social-emotional, I think that some of the good that you do is for the problems you never see, and then for the things you help students with that none of us will know about, because it'll be 10 years down the road, that they're having a much better life. So not to say that doesn't mean we wouldn't be interested in funding it, but it is, it makes it harder for us to determine what can we get arms around. So is that a long answer to tell you, I don't know?
We'll work on it. You said it's a long look.
Yeah, but to cut to the chase, we continue to talk about it, but we do, I do, I personally struggle a lot with the question of, because then I think we also get into areas that it's always not been WIFI's to tell the district what we think you should do. It's been ours to support a district-wide plan and initiative. And so for the district to come back and say, this is where we're going with social-emotional, can you guys help us out, I think would be, would be different and would be very helpful to us, and we would be very open to that conversation.
Well, clearly, one of the things that is coming out of this, two things are coming out of strategic visioning that I think you guys are modeling really nicely. The first one is actually having students involved in your decision-making process. I love the fact that you had Owen McGowan on your deciding board, right?
Well, Owen didn't actually get a vote, but Owen was our high school intern who did have a lot, who did sit with us and gave us some great ideas and feedback.
And raised money.
And raised money. How can you hate an intern that does that?
Exactly. So I think that's great, trying to give the students more voice with all the decision-making and helping us do problem-solving is really helpful, so it's great that you're modeling that. And I think the other piece that's becoming more evident, too, is just, you know, we have to be able to take some risks, and sometimes that takes resources, and resources that we can't justify until we know something's going to be successful. And so I think that early seed funding is just so important for us to encourage and be able to try new things and take risks and see what's different. In a traditional, successful community like Winchester, it's hard. But I hope the community also doesn't walk away thinking that all the really important innovative things that are happening can be funded by an outside organization, they just can't.
Right.
But I appreciate your continuing to support us in these days when we don't have quite enough to do as much as perhaps we should.
Would you like a motion?
Could we happily make a motion?
Okay.
If you can. Thank you for WIFI donating a second, but the committee has already shared.
So I move that we accept with gratitude the spring professional development grants and the spring education grants for a total of $55,936, as presented by WIFI. Second.
All those with favor.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Hope to see everybody at the Town Day Road Race.
I was going to say, get your jogging shoes on, people.
That's right, and you can walk.
Okay.
I see that Representative Day is here, so, did you want, did you have a few words to say, Representative Day?
I do, thank you, and I apologize for running very late tonight. It's the perils of overcommitting. But I was very happy to be able to be here to recognize Michael Schindelman for his many years of service, not only to the school committee but to town. I was, as a freshman in 2015, when I first got on the board, you're kind of casting about and not really sure what you're doing most of the time, and I was on the education committee. And Michael was one of, if not the, most active members of the community to reach out to me on a variety of issues, and it was always welcome. The thoughts were always unique and allowed me to look at things in a different way, which was really welcome. But I just find it remarkable that Michael and his wife lived here in Winchester for 17 years, and for 12 of those, he served on the school committee. So I think you're a hallmark for what folks should do when they move into a community, and certainly Winchester's better off for your service here. So I have a brief citation that I'd like to read from the Massachusetts House of Representatives. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives office is sincerest congratulations to Michael Schindelman in recognition of your dedication and distinguished service to the students of Winchester over your 12 years as a member of the school committee. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given this 23rd day of May 2017 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, by Robert E. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, and offered by Michael Day, State Representative. Michael, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Have a good evening.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, in this action-packed agenda with many occasions to celebrate, I am pleased to introduce to the committee our chosen candidate for the Director of Finance and Operations appointment, Ellen Whitmore. And as you know, John Dinesio is moving to Arlington for a promotion from his current position. And we advertised and received 22 applications, we interviewed six candidates and selected a finalist. Ellen came for a full-day site visit and received very, very favorable feedback from a variety of stakeholder groups. And I am pleased to recommend school committee appointment of Ellen Whitmore to the position of Director of Finance and Operations. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, and I know your daughter's in a concert and you want to go see that at some point, but I thought it would be helpful first if the committee would like to hear a little bit about Ellen's journey and what has brought her to Winchester, and then maybe you'll have a few questions for her before you vote her appointment.
Absolutely. So I'm currently the Director of Finance and Operations for Lester Public Schools. I have been the director there for two years. Prior to that, I was at a special ed collaborative for one year. My journey to choose Winchester Public, to apply to Winchester Public Schools honestly was based on my family. My partner lives and works on the north shore, she works in Wakefield. And for me, it was a personal decision to bring my family back together. It's been a long two years of her commuting from Wakefield to Spencer every week. So that was honestly my motivating factor. I've been quite happy in Lester, and when I saw the school spring posting for Winchester, the opportunity to come to Winchester, a school district that has an excellent reputation in academics, as well as the school-building projects and the community involvement, and just the outstanding things that are going on here, was something that really motivated me. And having spoken to John quite a bit, as well as all the other administrators and members of the school committee, it further reinforced to me that this definitely is a place that I would like to come and spend a long time. Prior to making the transition into school business administration, I worked in a district in the business office for 10 years. And quite honestly, I would like to go someplace and stay there for quite a while now, I'm done moving around.
Anyone have a question? I think many of us met you when you came for the site visit.
Yeah, I've met just about everybody.
Had a very good conversation.
Yes.
A lot of experience, and I think a lot of insight into the things beyond the numbers that, you know, is going to be very important to the district, and I think it's going to be a really good fit, so.
Great, I appreciate that.
I just want to share with the committee that when I spoke with Ellen's superintendent, she is heartbroken to lose her, which is always a good sign, as we are heartbroken to lose John. And that should you appoint Ellen, we've worked out a transition plan so she can spend some time in the district before John leaves, and he will make himself available after he has told me, and I will hold him to it after, after he moves on to Arlington, so.
During the summer.
Yeah, John's not going to be too far away, so if you have to give him a hard time, you can do that.
Pass the pass, Winchester.
That's right. He's not moving to Arlington, he's just going to be working there. That's the point.
So you get your Tuesdays back, too?
It'll just be a different night in Arlington.
So I'll only say, we met, that I was very impressed with your approach to working with people across all the different departments in town.
Thank you.
And your experience working with building projects, I think that'll be a huge plus for us. And I welcome you, and I hope that we can all serve as a resource to you as well in terms of getting to know people and.
Thank you, I very much appreciate that.
for us. And I welcome you, and I hope that we can all serve as a resource to you as well in terms of getting to know people and-
Thank you, I very much appreciate that.
I would also just offer, you know, one of the things that came up in our discussions is that Lester, of course, is a smaller district.
Yes.
But we talked about how Winchester, albeit larger, were very lean. And so, we imagine you have to wear many hats where you are-
I do.
Currently.
I do.
And that's kind of the trend today in Winchester, so I think that will serve you well.
Thank you.
And look forward to that.
Thank you.
Just quickly, I was going to say, so John had a nice sort of open-door policy and entertained many questions, whether it's by phone or email, and I think most of the questions are just desires to learn and understand better, so hopefully you can sort of meet that same high level that John has set with us.
That's-
And will sort of reciprocate by sharing back with you what our sort of legacy knowledge or information that we can share about the district and about some of the decisions, et cetera. So I appreciate that.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate that, because coming here, I will definitely need the knowledge and especially the institutional knowledge, the history that goes along with everything that's going on here right now. And in my current position, I have very much an open-door policy and have a very strong relationship with the members of my school committee and Board of Selectmen as well. So we share information and have free-flowing conversations.
Thank you.
Great.
Be happy to make a motion.
Okay.
So I move that the school committee appoint Ellen Whitmore to the position of Director of Finance and Operations effective July 2017.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yep.
I guess we're all getting on.
Thank you so much.
We're a happy bunch.
Yeah.
You'll be standing in line behind the Schindlemans for dinner.
And I think we're going to have Dennis Mahoney and Lori Kirby join us.
Hey, guys.
Hi, Mia.
Hello again.
Hello again.
Good evening. Good evening.
So, how should we-
Yes.
Start this, yeah?
All right, so, the process for approving handbook changes generally is a two-meeting or three-meeting process, depending on how many items we need to kind of work through. And at the last meeting, before the last meeting, you received a copy of the high school handbook with the suggested changes in red. And because we had a number of things to discuss with the middle and elementary levels, I told Dennis that he would be coming this meeting to take your feedback around any possible changes to the high school handbook. You might remember at the last meeting, George Gonzalez was here from the middle school. He only had three proposed changes, and he's prepared to make the changes that you had recommended, and so I felt comfortable that you're ready to move ahead with the middle school handbook. In your packet, you have a revision of the homework section of the elementary handbook. This was made collaboratively with all of the elementary principals. I weighed in, and probably Jen weighed in. We have a shared Google Doc, which is what we do in Winchester, is put things out for everybody to give feedback. And so I have a proposed draft here for you to comment on, and I think this is the last remaining item for the elementary handbook that needs revision. So why don't we start with the elementary piece? And if you have questions or comments on the suggested revisions which were made in relation to the discussion that we had at the last meeting.
Great, as I remember, the new section on homework was very brief. Very inspiring, very good as far as it went, but we thought that maybe the handbook is an opportunity to explain something to a parent, maybe at the moment when the parent is wondering, you know, at eight o'clock at night when they're thinking about homework, a way to communicate with parents about the new homework approaches. And so we thought maybe we could elaborate a little more in the handbook. So that's, it looks like you've done that, and that's good. But I think we might have some more questions, I'm not sure.
So, I wonder, could I, I wanted to just, it's somewhat brief, but-
Okay.
If I could share, and we didn't share this at the last meeting, so Susan and Michael worked hard on our policy review in 2015, and the school committee in June of 15 approved a homework policy, it's IKB, and it applies to all of our schools, K through 12. What's interesting about this policy is really, in a sense, it basically defines homework, which may be kind of a fundamental point of either anxiety or confusion among parents when we talk about what is homework. We all maybe have different ideas about it, some of it informed by our own experiences as students. So I'd just like to share this with you. So this is our policy, IKB. The term homework refers to an assignment to be prepared during a period of supervised study in class or outside of class. The purposes of homework are to improve the learning processes, to aid in the mastery of skills, and to create and stimulate interest on the part of the student. Homework is a learning activity which should increase in complexity with the maturity of the student. With increased maturity, learning should become an independent activity. This should be established through consistent assignments which encourage students to investigate for themselves and to work independently, as well as with others. The information for any homework assignment should be clear and specific so that the student can complete the assignment. Homework assignment should take into consideration individual differences of students such as health, ability, conditions at home, and educational resources at home. Homework should not require the use of reference materials not readily available in most homes, school libraries, or the public library, and should require the use of those materials only when the student has had instruction in the use of them. There are many other learning activities in the life of a student besides homework, such things as participating in school activities, pursuing cultural interests, participating in family living, and exploring personal interests should be considered by teachers when planning consistent assignments. Homework is not to be used as a form of punishment under any circumstances. And the policy goes on to say, "The school committee has adopted homework policies and practices for each grade levels, grade K through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12. These more specific homework policies can be found in the school handbook." So IKB really exists as an umbrella, and then one can then turn to the school handbooks for more information. And what struck me as I read through this after our last meeting is those last two paragraphs that talk about the other elements of a student's life and the activities outside the classroom as something Lori has certainly spoken to before. And my sense, really even after the last meeting, was maybe, there may be some confusion or maybe just differences of understanding around what the word homework means, particularly in the context of a very recent policy where we're calling it an assignment. And so it may just simply be, it may be a reality that some parents are looking for something black and white concrete. What is my child expected to do at home on a Monday through Thursday night, because we don't assign it on Fridays? And what are they expected to bring back? It may simply be as simple as that, because there's a lot in the current district-wide policy that I like. And I think Lori, you and the team have sort of captured that here in this revision.
Thanks, I do, and I think, you know, that was a helpful guide, and certainly it was a team effort, so that's always gives us a good result in the end.
Yeah, I think that that's, you know, as you say, the umbrella, and this is more of the implementation-level translation of it. And it's a work in progress, and there's more, I guess, a little more communication that goes between the school and the home besides what's in the handbook, too. Which, you know, you talked about the last time you were here.
Right.
What it's, what are you going to do on, you know, curriculum night, and what do the daily, you know, assignments look like?
Correct, and I think just the last paragraph within, you know, the opening of this policy, it just lets people know to, you know, when you go to your classroom teacher, you'll get updates throughout the year and all in a variety of different ways. So just making that very clear, too. It's not just one overarching, but we're looking at the individual grade levels because they're all very developmentally different.
Right. Anybody else have a question, comment?
I really appreciate you putting this together. I think it's fabulous. I think it explores and expands basically the love of homework, that homework is about lifelong learning, instead of it being about an assignment. I appreciate the policy of it is sort of factual, but I feel like this is the spirit of it. And I think if every student learned that a good night's rest is your homework, you know, maybe I could get my kids in bed a little earlier.
You deleted that one.
So thank you for pulling it together. I love, I love the spirit of what you're trying to do, so thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody else? Michelle?
I really appreciate the detail that you've added to this, particularly surrounding reading, and that the focus at the elementary level is on reading. The only question I still had was the very last sentence, the developmentally appropriate for each grade level? And I was wondering how, if that's still a little too open to interpretation, that if there's any kind of guiding principles that we would want to add for grade-by-grade expectations for that, if? Because I know that at fourth and fifth grade at some of the schools and in some of the classrooms, the homework sort of brings up a lot more than these expectations are guiding people out to. So I didn't, I was unclear still about what is expected, particularly in upper grades.
So I guess that's where the conversation really comes in as a district. And it comes in at K to 5, and then just across the grade levels from K to 12. So we are having these different types of conversations amongst ourselves and certainly with staff. And so, thinking about what natural next steps would be, it would be to dive deeper in, so that our practices, K through 12, better align with what we know research says. So this whole idea of developmentally appropriate, well, fourth grade is different than fifth, which is different than second, so the expectation should be different, and they'll never be exactly the same, because even within that fourth-grade cohort, you have a range of learners. And we want to keep it open like that, so that we can meet their needs in the best way. And that's why I love the last line, if I don't say so myself, where the individual teacher will be communicating with parents about what the expectation for homework or at home has, you know, is.
Right. Right. I think that a couple of key things that maybe aren't coming through in this document as clearly as our aspirations, and that would be that homework is not the same for every child in the same class.
Right.
That the developmental range within a class can be wide, and that developmentally appropriate homework is going to change over the course of a year. And so it is, so one of the things I think that I'd like to revisit, particularly at the middle school level, is defining homework by the amount of time. So eighth grade will be two and a half hours, and seven will be one and a half, and so forth, because it shouldn't be measured in terms of time, it should be measured in terms of what does the child need to advance as her learning and her passions. And so, I like that this is somewhat open-ended, but I recognize that it puts a responsibility on us to get feedback from parents to continually get better as we sort of shift to a choice-based, personalized homework approach, from everybody getting the same list of spelling words and doing it, you know, exactly the same way every week, which is more predictable but not as effective. And so I know that you've been giving a survey, parent survey around homework, and so perhaps we can come back and revisit the results of that survey and your conversations with the teachers, and look at what is working and what you'd like to-
Well, if you want me to give a brief overview, I'm ready to hit the send button out to parents, pulled all that together. So for the past couple of weeks, individual teachers, we all sent out the same survey, but there are little nuances, because each classroom has a different group of children, so we want to make sure the feedback goes right back to the teacher, who can make the direct, most efficient impact. So I took a look at all of that, and I'll just share with you some common themes. And the order which I share are the order, the most frequent of comments. And the first one is that there's more time for family moments. Next on the list, there's less stress. There's more time for reading. So on average, 86% of our students read every single night. And parents of students in grades 1 and 2 are more likely to read aloud to their children than the other grades. There's more time for independent exploration. People feel less connected with what their child is learning, and there's definitely concern over that transition to middle school. So in thinking about that, just working with teachers, and we'll get better with all of this, our natural next steps is going to be thinking about how we communicate with parents and better utilize the scheduled calendar events that we already have in place, like the welcome-back coffees, the curriculum nights, the PTO meetings that we might have, how the blogs, newsletters, individual emails that teachers sends home. Then, we need to really consider, because this seems to be, this is a big issue, when I think that homework is really a big indicator for parents as to how their child is doing, we get, we have to do a better job at communicating progress over the course of the year, beyond conference and beyond the report cards. So as a staff, we need to really sit down and think about that. And then, just more opportunities for the parents to come into the classroom. At the end, June is loaded, and, you know, so unfair, because it is packed, and not every family has the opportunity to take all these days off. So we really need to spread that out throughout the year, because that's the best indicator of how your child is doing, academically and just socially, emotionally. So we really have to think about what other opportunities do we have for parents beyond just coming on in and volunteering, but really having students share what they're learning throughout the year. So that's something else we'll consider. And we're going to be offering more types of workshop kind of things. We have a family literacy morning coming up in June, and during that time, there'll be time for parents to go into their child's classroom, but then we're going to have workshop in the library, and the reading specialist, library media specialist, and IT specialist will be doing workshops all about reading and thinking about the different tools that are out there, giving hints on how to really foster that love of reading. So we have that in the works, and again, we have to think more outside now, so that's social-emotional, let's make it more tangible, let's get that language wrapped around home and school, and then how we're using this technology within our own day, and how we can really empower the kids, or have the kids really understand the power of these tools. So really helping them to become more responsible and just good digital citizens. So those are ideas that we're also thinking about. And then, as a district, we need to really come together more and then think about where we are in our practices, not just at the elementary level, but what that looks like across. And certainly, there's plenty of data out there that says our kids are saying to us, "Help," so we want to pay attention to that. And again, thinking about what the research says. And we're also thinking about just this whole idea of project-based learning. Judy's connected with MCIA, did I get that acronym? Another one in education. But we're going to be joining in on that, and we're going to expand that to hopefully not make it an elementary, not make it a one-school, but take the resources they give us and grow it as a district, K to 12, and really taking a look at some of those open-ended project-based learning opportunities that we can integrate better, so that we're, you know, making those standards come alive better for our kids. So those are just some, you know, off-the-top kind of ideas that we have, and certainly as we consider this more, we'll get better at this. So the feedback was very helpful, and we're excited about what the future is.
All right.
Got it. I was just going to-
Go ahead, Chris.
So I had a question about, that last paragraph clearly kind of puts it in the, with the teacher to provide information about what's appropriate in terms of what the expectation is. But what about the consequences for a student that doesn't complete homework? I'm not so much thinking about the younger child, K-2, but I'm thinking about a grade 3, grade 4, grade 5 student. And I raise it not so much about what they specifically be, what should be, because I feel like that's sort of too much into the weeds for a policymaking school committee, but I raise it more in the context of sort of consistency or fairness. So just as we know anecdotally, even within the same school building in the same grade level, there are, there may be a third-grade teacher who really sends a lot of homework assignments home with kids, and another who, comparatively speaking, sends very little. That's one thing. That is a difference, some may call it a disparity, others may argue whether or not that's fair, but the teachers are different, their styles are different, and what we're leaning for is consistency in the curriculum. So what I'm curious about is, what about the consequence, what should we, what's appropriate to say, what kind of guidance would there be for consequences? It seems to me maybe that would come from a principal, so that, so the consistency of consequence- consequences would be similar. In other words, you don't have kids in a grade who are losing privileges or getting grades docked, and in another, in another class, they sort of get the free pass. Is that something you guys have talked about? I mean, consequences really only come up at the middle school and high school level.
So it just goes back to, I think, our mission here, to tie homework to that, to put that much weight on it is exactly what we shouldn't be doing because there's, again, just going back to the research, we're not going to put undue pressure knowing that that's not going to make a difference for our kids academically. And if, we only know that socially and emotionally, it really is going to be difficult. So the only consequence that, so as a system or as a, you know, a district, and, well, I shouldn't even say that, at Morocco School, we make it very clear, anytime students make mistakes, and that's what they are, socially, emotionally, academically, we give natural consequences. And so again, we think about what those natural consequences are. So in being mindful of the homework, never ever do we say at Morocco School, we know the research says these kids need to get out and play and they don't have enough of that. So that is never a punishment, just like you said, going in here. So then it's just thinking about what we're assigning and what, they're individuals. So, you know, you're going to have a good number that bring it back, and those that don't, you put it in natural consequence, and if there's a pattern, then we have to figure out what's at the root of this, and we come up with a plan. So it can't be punitive, it is all about, and I would say that's true, in any mistake that's made, it should be, it's a mistake and we problem solve so that we don't continue to make the same one. Did I answer?
Did. I like that answer very much, it shouldn't be punitive. And I guess I ask it in the context of how, is that something that could be conveyed to parents? I'm not saying it shouldn't, because I think, I think you send that message at the beginning of the school year, I presume the other four principals do something similar. I think this sort of falls into the area of the classroom principal connection and then the homeschool connection. But I sort of throw it out there as an open question because this is a lot about what it should be, but there is stress associated with the homework. I will just, since I brought up the last meeting, a quick little personal anecdote, although my first grader is expected to read every night, and she does, we are also supposed to send home a little sheet that says, you know, which book she read and how many minutes she read. And there are some weeks where she does all the reading, but sort of we forget to fill out the form. And so she leaves the house stressed out because she didn't fill out the form. And that makes me feel bad because I'm a parent and I'm supposed to really be watching her over that. So, you know, the kids can stress out over some of the smaller things that we might not even really think about.
Exactly. And so again, you have to think about those practices and going back to what research says, is it really worthwhile? So those are the kinds of things we think about all the time and as grade levels, as a staff, as a district, we're talking about. Because schools should not be stressful for kids, it shouldn't be. And it's on us to figure out how to make, take those stresses away as much as we can because some of it's internal, but to make school a place where they're looking forward to going.
Thank you.
So I wanted to make sure that we didn't lose something, I wanted to capture something that you said, Judy, that I thought was quite beautiful, that I heard you add on naturally to that last sentence but doesn't actually exist there. And I heard it echoed in what Lori was saying, too. You said developmentally appropriate for each grade level and each student, which is, I think, a different message than just each grade level. And I think it's a small change, but a meaningful one that sort of echoes what Lori was saying.
And each student.
Absolutely.
So we're ready for...
Is Ms. Bergstrom proposing an amendment?
Consider it done. Thank you.
Second.
So are we ready?
Are we just voting on elementary or...
So you have to vote on the middle and the elementary, and do you want to wait until Dennis gets tortured?
Oh, that's why you keep looking at me. You wanted one motion.
I don't know, maybe Lori wants to go home.
I don't know.
You can do one motion for each.
I was going to do one for each, yeah.
I'm happy to make a motion that we approve the elementary handbook as amended with our revised language for the homework policy tonight, including each student for developmentally appropriate work.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Lori.
One level done.
So you need to vote on middle school as well, so you might as well get that out of the way.
Middle school?
I move that we approve the student handbook for the seventeen, eighteen school year as previously presented with amendments.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Mahoney's up. Are you comfortable just summarizing and reminding us what the major changes are?
Sure. We did a lot of the little changes with names and dates and whatnot in the principal's address, but really the focus, I like to see the handbook as a living document. It's going to change every single year. This being my first year, I don't want to make sweeping changes, but I did want to have some impact in some of the significant aspects of what goes on in the high school in the day-to-day, particularly with our absence policy. In our handbook, the previous absent policy wasn't spelt out clearly, what is an excused absence versus unexcused absence. So we put in the state rule and the seven, the seven excused absences by the state of Massachusetts. So what that means and how it impacts a student, how we can also evolve our absence reporting structure, so we're moving away from the phone and we're trying to get into an all-email system. The system's working pretty well, especially when our phones cut out, like they did today, again, for the tenth time.
That'll be Ellen's problem.
One, one of the interesting, one of the interesting things with the Google system that we moved to is that Google has a unique out-of-office, we're going to call it a glitch, but if you email the high school, you'll get an automatic reply saying, "Thank you for your email, this doesn't mean that your absence is excused yet, but we appreciate it, this is your acknowledgement." If you do it the next day or within the next four days, you do not get an out-of-office reply because Google turn, has a, it has a rule that you can get your out-of-office once, but not within the next four days. I think, it's, you can Google it. It talks about how they don't want to load up people's email, emails with out-of-office information. So it's something that, you know, we're, we're working with IT as a workaround, but it's not, it might just not work. It's an improvement nonetheless, because if you call the school when the phones are working, you still never got a receipt from your call. So if you're doing it once every few, few months or once, once a week even, you're still going to get a receipt saying, "We've got your, your information, thank you very much." But we fleshed out the, the attendance policy in general, also the makeup policy, the, what isn't an excused absence policy, and how it affects the N rule. The N rule is a rule that we've had on the books for years, and it's a no-credit rule. Historically, we actually didn't give grades if you were absent for X number of, X number of days and throughout the school year and in a semester. We moved away from grades last year and we started to talk about taking credit because there is, attendance is tied to success, we know that, and we also have to have students in school one hundred and eighty days, nine hundred and ninety hours, if we're, if it's possible. So we took the N rule and sort of evolved that and fleshed it out even more with more information of how if you have an excused absence, it does not count against the N rule. And that historically, again, has not been something that we've been doing. So now we're kind of giving parents and students information on what's excused, what's not excused, how it can affect your, your overall standing and credit in class. And those, that's a, that's a big, not so much of policy changes or expectation changes, but it's just a lot more information for parents and students to base decisions and ask questions as well. So I can take questions on that before I get to the next big one, if anyone has clarifying questions.
I thought that was a good change because it sort of makes it easier to understand what's there if you state what the state law is about what's an excused absence. So that was good.
Thank you. The N rule discussion was a year-long discussion with the faculty. School Improvement Council, it's a hot-button issue, but we were able to use the faculty advisory committee, the School Improvement Council, and the entire faculty in faculty meetings to kind of come up with something that we all agree on, we're all comfortable with, and we're able to evolve and move forward with it. So we're pretty happy with that. It's also, a lot of the rules in the handbook, you have to understand, affect maybe less than ten percent of the student population. It's just not something that, they're there in case. It's not an everyday occurrence when we're talking about suspensions or absence or anything like that, it's just there in case. And most students of their thirteen hundred plus and climbing will never have much impact with the handbook. They'll never have to, they say they'll read it, but they will never have to know exactly what's in there. Because if you go to school day-to-day and you're just doing your job and enjoying the process, this handbook really doesn't come into play in your life too much, which is nice.
Is there an impact on taking the final exams from the new policy?
No, we didn't touch the final exam policy for seniors.
Who else?
So I have a que, I have a question that, I was digging into this earlier today and I couldn't find my answer, whether it was in the handbook or it's in sort of the athletics piece. But maybe separate and apart from what the document says, if we have a student athlete who leaves the game due to a concussion, and then they're ready to come back to school, and they have exams and quizzes to be made up, I mean, that absence could hit at a really bad time, like midterms, for instance. Is it our priority that the student be allowed to make up that work only before school and not after school? If the student is in a position to make up work after school and the student is back in school because he or she has recovered from a concussion, where there may be pressure to return to the game and to the team, which wins out? Which should take the priority?
School.
So I'm asking that question because I'm aware we have some students who have left the game, they've come back, and then they're sort of the healthy athlete, but they also have a lot of makeup work that's expected. And my understanding anecdotally is there certainly, I think some of it comes from the students themselves, a desire, I want to get it done early before school so I can get back to the game and to the team. But I also understand sometimes that pressure can come from other places, including, you know, the team itself. So my sense is, you know, this is a school district and the priority should always be on the academics. But I don't know really what our language says about this. The language we have, certainly we have a concussion policy, we have a return from concussion that's pretty clear. But I got to be honest, I couldn't remember and I couldn't actually find where we make a distinction about that, the student returning who's now healthy, who has both an academic burden in terms of makeup, but also is still rostered on a varsity team.
So our makeup policy is flexible, particularly around concussions. And concussions are a case-by-case basis. You can't define one concussion by another, and it's certainly different than a broken arm or, you know, a broken finger that you miss a day of school for. So for makeup policy, we do have, it is clear but also gray because we want to have the flexibility. We do say for every day that a student is out, they'll have two days to make work up. But there's also a plan in place to talk to your teacher, to say, "How much time do I have? How much flexibility do I have?" Rushing back to the field is, is second, distant secondary. It's not even really on my radar. I don't want any student to feel rushed back or pressured to be on this, to participate in a team activity.
So let me be clear on that point. I'm not suggesting any students are returning earlier than they should. They've all been cleared. The point is when a student is then healthy and back in the building, there is an academic burden because there's makeup work, but the season is still going. And so that, you can imagine that there's pressure then after the school bell rings.
I would say that most teachers, every teacher that I've interacted with this year, are very flexible in when the makeup workers do, particularly when it comes to concussions. So if you're out for a day for a head cold, you would typically have two days to make up the work that you missed. But if you're out for a concussion, a lot of people are very, very comfortable extending, extending deadlines, extending expectations, or even reducing workload, depending on how long you're out and how severe your symptoms are.
And do you have a sense that that flexibility also extends to coaches? In other words, are we, do we have coaches who are flexible to say, "I understand that makeup exam, you can't do it six forty-five in the morning, you're going to need to do it after school. Doing it after school means you're going to miss the practice." That's my point.
Good question.
Do you feel like we have flexibility on both sides?
I'm sure we have, I'm sure we have a lot of flexibility, but I don't know every coach, I haven't met every coach, and I certainly don't know what they're thinking when it comes to their flexibility and what they expect from a student when they return. That's going to take a little bit more time for me.
My sense is teachers really are and have been pretty flexible. It's more a gray area in my mind around some of our coaches, and I just don't know what our language says and if our language is purposefully gray or should be more articulate.
When it comes to concussions, I'm not comfortable being fully articulate because they're so, they're so different from student to student, and the symptoms can pop up at any time. So if somebody has a relapse, there's no way, in my opinion, there's no way to truly define it.
So I think it's, this bears, speaking with the athletic director about, making sure when he does his initial coaches' meetings that we're clear, concussions are not any different from any other kind of illness or even social, emotional concern. And so every student athlete who has issues, we need to be sure that the coaches understand that they'll be flexible around making up academic work and needing to prioritize academics sometimes over sports. And I think student athletes put a lot of pressure on themselves not to look down by missing a practice or missing a game. I think we've really clarified expectations around kids going away for vacations and not being penalized for sports in the ways that they had been in the past. And so I think we've made some strides, but I think concussions should be treated the same as any other illness, and we should be flexible in terms of letting kids make up the work and the work that works for them. That's not necessarily tied to how many kids are out.
Can I make a request, maybe? So I'm a big, I hate death by policy. I feel like we can policy things forever, and I don't want to do that. But maybe the suggestion or the request here is that, you know, we figure out a way that we engage coaches in the same kind of dialogue around what are our goals with these students? The same way we would do with art teachers or music teachers is, we just, we explore. Because I would hate for the student whose only joy really in school is sports to not be able to participate. That may be the only thing that brings them back to school if they, for whatever reason, are no longer happy or healthy in a school. Maybe, maybe you and Mark could sort of share with us some ways that we can build better communications between the school and the coaches, because I think to some degree, they are kind of separate from the staff.
The more teachers we get to coach, the better it is.
Right. Yeah, I guess that's true, but they're overwhelmed, too. So anyway, it was just a...
Mark and I talk every day, I'm happy to, sometimes multiple times a day, so I'm happy to have a new reason to have a conversation.
Did you have any other changes?
I sure do, speaking of Mark. We are evolving our chemical health policy a little bit. It's another hot-button issue in the community as well as amongst coaches and with Mark and myself. Historically, our chemical health policy is talked about in the presence of. And if you were found to be in the presence of, typically by the police department, in any police department, because of our memorandum of understanding, whether it's in Winchester or any part of, you know, any police department in New England, State Cape or New Hampshire, if you were found to be in the presence of, you would lose automatically twenty-five percent of your season. Now, that's the strictest policy that I am aware of anywhere in Massachusetts, outside of perhaps one of the private schools. And I personally felt like it's not a reasonable policy, it's not a realistic policy. And this is, this is a fine line I'm walking. It's certainly a risk. Because we have seen since this policy, the original policy of if, in the presence of, not, not in, under the influence of all, at all, but in the presence of any alcohol or illicit substance, you will lose twenty-five percent of your season. You automatically go to the MIAA policy, whether you are under the influence or not. In the last ten years, we've seen our numbers decrease quite a bit for how many students were found to be in the presence of or found to be intoxicated under the influence and lost their MIA, lost the twenty-five percent. I feel like in today's, for today's modern student, being in the presence of can be very, very difficult. And sometimes you're putting yourself in a very difficult situation. Now, i- is it reasonable for us to say, "We don't want you to go to parties, we want you to go to the movies, go to, you know, the city of Boston, walk around, go bowling, find a million different things to do?" Yes, it's reasonable for us to say that, but I don't think it's realistic. And those are two very different things. I think kids do find themselves in the presence of sometimes without their even, without even having knowledge of it. They also might have the opportunity to help a friend who's made a bad decision, and in helping that friend, they might put themselves in danger and put themselves in the presence of because they don't know what that student or what that student athlete has in their possession. So one of the things, or a few of the parts of the policy that are highlighted and read that I wanted to evolve away from was the in the presence of policy, where instead of losing twenty-five percent of your season, now you're going to do community service, write a letter of reflection, and really think about the choices that you're making. Because what I've seen since my, in my short time here and historically in my previous positions, is that when you lose your privilege, your athletic privilege, your extracurricular privilege, you, it make, it gets you very angry, especially when you see that you, there's a sense of unfairness. Now, if you're under the influence, kids are, kids rarely get angry about it, they own up to their mistake and they know the bad choice that they made. But if they're in the presence of and they lose something that they're absolutely passionate and care about, and they could be helping a friend at that same time, and we never know whether they're truly helping a friend or not, but that's not for us to figure out. If they are not intoxicated, under the influence, or in possession of, I'd rather them do community service, write a letter of reflection, than lose an activity or, or extracurricular or s-... I'd rather them do community service, write a letter of reflection than lose an activity or, or extracurricular or sport or something that they're very passionate about. It just seems to me like an evolution of a very, a very good rule that we had that, from what I understand, was very necessary years ago. And seeing our numbers decrease, I think we were evolving past it a little bit and giving kids a little bit of a flexibility in understanding that, hey, there's levels to bad decisions. Showing up at a house, not knowing what's there, and then finding yourself in a bad situation is one. Taking it to the next step and actually being under the influence is another level. So there should be levels. I've also decided, you know, with, in talking to the School Improvement Council and the Faculty Advisor Committee and Mark, as well as a few coaches, I'd rather get away from out-of-school suspension as much as we can. I'd like to keep them, keep students in-house as much as possible. So when there's an opportunity for out-of-school suspension, instead of sending the student home to say, you know, an empty house, no, no guidance there, you can be playing video games, watching TV all day, it's more or less a vacation, I'd rather the student stay in school, have access to their special education services if they need them, and have access to their curriculum, even if it's special ed or not. So they'll be in-school suspended more often than out-of-school suspension. That's not to say we have a lot of suspensions. Again, I want to reiterate, very, very small percentage of our population ever interacts with this handbook at all. But it's good to have some, some safety, some safety measures in place. So the in-the-presence-of policy is, it's a major change. It's a, it's, I think it's a more realistic outlook for our students and also helps them make decisions if they're presented to them.
What happens, Dennis, if someone is actually participating in it, not just in the presence of it, and they lose 25% of their seasons? What happens with that time? Do they go to the games? Do they?
That's, they, they can't dress, they can, we want them, so, so one other thing to say...
They're not going home.
No. So one other thing is typically, historically, this policy has been only athletics. I'm moving it to say that it's now all extracurricular activities. It's not fair to take away just the athlete's privilege, where if you're in, if you're in the chorus and you're going to, you're going away, or if you're in the art club or what have you, it's an opportunity for kids, when they make a mistake, for us to say, hey, timeout. What are you up to? You need to think about the decisions you're making, you're living too fast. Slow down, we're gonna take this away from you for a short amount of time, or you're gonna do community service and think about what the choices that you're making and what they're costing you. So if you are at a party in, so ask the question again, please, Boney?
So not the kid that's in the presence, but a kid who's drinking, gets caught drinking, baseball team, loses 25% of the game. Do they, do they, do they go with the team? They still have to support the team?
They, I mean, that's really, it's up to the coach, but most coaches would want the student there to support the team. You can't be dressed for, for any game. But you can practice because we do want the students to still stay busy. We don't want them just, again, home by themselves with, with no supervision.
Yep, okay.
And it's an escalating consequence. So if they drink, they have one infraction, it's 25% of a season, they have...
Two infractions, 60% of the season, and three infractions, it's the rest of the season. And it could evolve into the next season. Now with the in-the-presence-of, it's really just community service-based. We're gonna give you, you're gonna do community service, it has to be pre-approved because we don't want you to do something that, you know, we, we feel is not up to the par of what our expectations are. And we have, between the two assistants and principals and myself, we have a lot of experience of what good community service is. We'd love it to be in the school or for one, for a nonprofit that we have a relationship with. Service of others gives you an opportunity to think about your choices and think about what you're doing and also think about the value of helping other people. You might never have done any community service and you might really actually end up enjoying it. So there's a learning opportunity there. We're also making sure that anybody that is under the influence has to attend a class in school and write a letter of reflection about that as well. Martha McDonough, one of our, one of our school psychologists, is more than happy to sit with students and give them a class on choices and, you know, what, what taking illegal substances can do to your body and your mind. And they'll write a letter of reflection on that as well. I want students to write more and to prove that they're thinking about their choices rather than us saying, that's it, you're done with this, you, you lose that, you can't, you know, you, you might learn your lesson, but we'll never know if you do. We want you to actually write and think about what your choices are.
Yeah, Dennis, I wondered if you had been thinking about or exploring the concept of restorative justice at all with this, when you made this change?
Oh, I mean, I have a background, a little background in restorative justice. I'm not quite sure if it fit with this particular policy, though.
Generally, if you've hurt another person or had a problem...
Broke something, stole something.
That's a, but I think that, and having other students involved in doling out the punishments or the consequences is part of restorative justice, right? That's a...
Well, I was thinking more in terms of, you know, you've, you've violated this norm that other people are not allowed to drink either and that you're letting the team down because you're not gonna be able to participate. Just sort of, you know, in this letter of reflection, I, it just, you know, it crossed my mind that you had been having some discussions along those lines. And I, I think that's a positive step to take, to, to think more about that.
The letter is tied to that, and I, I think a lot of coaches, in my experience, have the student, or, you know, the athlete or the, whatever club activity it is, speak to the group.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, it's not a comfortable situation for the student, but it's certainly puts you, it puts you, it makes you think about, again, who you're letting down, not your, not just yourself.
Right, okay.
I think you're bringing up a good point, though, in terms of moving away from sort of a punishment-based discipline system to one that promotes reflection and requires the students to physically do something instead of having something done to them in terms of giving or serving others, I think is a great way to go, and I commend you for moving towards in-school suspension instead of, you know, the vacation that is out-of-school suspension. The reality is when the very, very small percentage of our students don't comply with our expectations, there's not that much we can do to really change their behavior if all we do is suspend them. And so I think, I think restorative justice is great. I don't know that our kids will be very busy because we don't have, we have very compliant students. But, but I, I like to have students involved in some of the decision-making and I think that would be interesting to look into.
So those are, those are the two major, major changes. And again, it's a living document. We'll have more changes every year, and I'm, I'm actually used to a more robust handbook. But I thought these, these two are good jumping-off points for our, our evolution of less, less punitive, more thoughtful discipline.
So I have to ask, when you say you're used to a more robust handbook, I'm not playing an app, by the way, I'm reading your edits on my phone. Didn't have my tablet with me tonight. So are you used to literally a bigger, thicker book, more words, or stronger, more robust language?
More words. Not, you know, and more, more grids, more grids. If you, if you do this, this, you know, this happens if you do that.
More specific.
Yes, very specific, but not, not a lot more language.
Okay. I just have a nuts and bolts question, if I can, just beyond the in-the-presence-of, but, but for consequences like that first and then the second subsequent. When the language says the student shall lose eligibility, eligibility for 25% of their athletic season and then subsequently the next 60%, can you just help me understand, how does that work as a practical matter if you have a student who, let's say, is playing a fall and winter sport, not a spring sport? And there's a violation and it's in the winter season and there's not many days left? How, how is...
It waits for them. That's an MIA rule, they...
It applies to the next year? How, how does that work?
You just do, you just do the math. It's, you know, and we've, we've had that, we've had that situation
Okay.
this year and I've had it in the past. You figure out how many games are left, what percentage of the season those games are, and then you figure out the next season. And then you figure out how many games you're gonna have to lose for that.
Okay.
And it, it can carry over to the next year.
So, so if there was a violation in a winter season and there's no spring sport, it could apply in the subsequent fall season of the next school year, is that right? Something like that?
Yes, and one of the, one of the odd or happy byproducts is if that fall sport is usually the sport that the student is super duper passionate about, it's the one they love the most, they pick up a spring sport. Because they'll, they'll, they will take, they'll take some of their penalty then, but they have to, but they have that, and they'll lose some of that season.
If they can make the team.
If they make the team, but they have to, sometimes they'll choose a non-cut team, but they have to finish that season in order for it to stick.
Yeah.
So you can't just pick up, you can't just pick up track and, and, you know, pay off your debt and then quit track. It doesn't work that way. But you're doing a whole season of track, so it still works. It's still, it's still a benefit.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So a couple quick ones. You said that, that handbook's thick and they, not many people read it. Do they bring the sports infractions to their attention as they register for a sport?
Yes, and Marcaria brings it up every, every single season. And he, he has made his, he has taken our policy and adopted it for his handbook as well, cut and paste.
So the other thing, I don't know if you've thought of this, it occurred to me that with the zero tolerance, so to speak, you don't have to hear the cases, but I would imagine you're gonna get a lot of pleading down to the easier. I was there, I wasn't drinking, I swear.
If your name ends up in the police report, you'll be, you'll end up there as intoxicated or not intoxicated. You're there, you're, you're still in the presence of, and the police took you out of the crowd or a small group of people, there's really no pleading with that. You know, if we're not...
But I thought you said is you were changing it such that in one set of rules, doesn't matter what you're drinking, or there, you're getting the punishment. In the other rule, depending on how guilty you were, there's a different set of justice.
Correct.
Saying now you're gonna have to be the arbitrator of which they get because they'll plead to you.
No, the police, the police will tell us whether you're intoxicated or not. So you'll, if you were intoxicated, you'll have your 25%. If you were not, but you were in, you were there, then you have your community service. Now, we're not gonna go on pictures or reports by anybody else, I want to make that clear. Nobody's gonna turn anybody in or say, but so and, you know, but Cindy Boney was at the party. That's not, unless you end up in the police report.
I was gonna say, you're like Cindy.
Punchy tonight.
We, we would prefer to never deal with these instances. You know, they come to us, we don't, we don't ever go looking for them.
Almost always, out-of-school infractions, which make, that's why it has a consequence only for privileges, like sports and extracurriculars, and I commend you for putting that in the mix. Because it may give some kids incentive not to make bad choices. If they don't play sports, but they're really invested in music or drama.
It's a fairness, it's a fairness rule more than anything there.
Just if I could just, the last thought. So my understanding of where we got to was to eliminate the need for bringing back to the police and the school, you know, teachers and principals, a very difficult conversation with the parent or child about what happened. Zero tolerance eliminates that sort of necessity. You're actually opening that door again.
The door must have been open because it's all I've dealt with this year. You know, I was, I was there, I was helping a friend, but I wasn't drinking. So we, and we use zero tolerance. And I can tell you on camera, I felt very uncomfortable doing that. You know, knowing that the police told me that this person was not, was not inebriated. Now, we don't know if they were going off to do something else, and the timing of it was not just, you know, it just lucked out for that student athlete. But I don't feel comfortable holding a student responsible for being in the presence of something that they may or may not have control over. Yes, yeah, oh, so let me clarify, in working with Mark, because the rule did decrease our numbers quite a bit from where they were years ago, that had been told, we can pilot this. This is not something that we have to say this is how it's gonna be. If we see a bump up and we see, we see police reports just coming to us left and right, then we're gonna have to go back to the in-the-presence-of policy and go back and retroactively change it next year. I'm very comfortable doing that.
One thing that I have heard, and I was a high school principal and I had to deal with this issue frequently, is that student, if you have the same consequence for in-the-presence-of and also under the influence of, then students who are not under the influence sometimes engage in risky behavior to avoid detection. That would, would result in the classic, the police show up and everybody runs away, or they drive away really quickly, or they drive in a car with someone they shouldn't be just to get away from the situation. And now, I think, the consequence being less, students will handle themselves more calmly, I would hope.
Right.
And if they are not deemed to be intoxicated by the police, then it doesn't come to our attention necessarily. And so I hope that it will keep our students safer in some respects. Although I, I have to say, I don't think we're sending the signal out there strongly enough into the community that getting access to alcohol and substances is way too easy for our kids and our kids are left unsupervised too much for my liking, from what I hear. And so that's a, that's a community problem that we've been dealing with for years and years. And all suburban communities have the same issue, so.
I could say, while I'm transitioning to, to this more community service and reflection piece, I have a really good relationship with SRO Perrinick, and he and I talk, again, on a, on a daily basis, and we are very concerned with some of the choices that our students are making, then some of the things that are going on in the community. And he, he is extremely concerned because he hears things that I don't, that I'm, that I'm unaware about. And we're, we're both concerned and he's, he's extremely concerned.
Can I, to put that in maybe a little more context, are you concerned about what you're seeing in context with your previous districts and what you learned from your peers? And is Sergeant Perrinick concerned about what he's seeing in, in the context of other NIMLET communities?
We don't just, we, that's a great question. We don't really discuss or compare other communities. We think about, our scope is just Winchester and, and the rise of, the rise of decision, bad decision-making, access to, you know, different types of illicit substances and, and the increased access and, or the legalization, or the confusion over the legalization of marijuana. And we're concerned about students and graduates as well. He's, he's concerned about the community, I'm concerned about Winchester High School. I'm concerned about the community, but my focus is my kids. He, he is very concerned about the community, and our, number of our students will be in that community very soon.
Can I just ask a quick question about the end of that policy? You talked about how that it's in effect seven days a week. It's basically a 365
Yes.
rule. How are we, and it's, my understanding is the in-the-presence policy, that's, you're not determining that. That's coming from police reports.
Correct.
So is that gonna be dealt with when the students come back to school then in the fall? Or are you going to be in contact with families then throughout the year? How are they gonna be communicated? There's a consequence for their action that happens in July. Are they waiting till September to find that out?
That's a great question. I'm more inclined to give them a call, you know, over the summer, after I hear about information and have them come in. I mean, it's, it's definitely gonna be what the situation is. But no, I don't want the first day of school saying, hey, you know, welcome back, by the way.
Right.
You know, you're losing 25% of this or that. More often than not, I think for athletics, they know, they know instantly. For the extracurricular activities, this'll be a new thing. This'll, this, there'll be some growing pains with this. So I think the face-to-face conversation and explaining to the parents, you know, what we're doing and why could, could be helpful rather than welcome back.
Right, but you're fairly confident that you'll be getting notice of that from police departments? Like, say if they're on the Cape and they, or...
They share information, they share information. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of things that go, that go unwritten, undocumented, and that's fine. Those are, those are, you know, the police decisions. But our, our police department has done a great job working with local and, and things like, you know, further down the Cape as well. So the information will come to us.
Great, thank you.
And we don't want, we don't want the police to feel pressured to do anything other than what they're already doing. They've done a great job, and their, their reports are clear and they really help us make our decisions and help us with our, you know, following the handbook.
I'm happy to make a motion. I move that we vote to approve the Winchester High School for the 2017, 2018 school year as presented, or is this just a first read?
If you don't have any questions, we can, we can vote tonight.
I think I'm comfortable with that. I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, oh, one, one thing?
So some discussion?
S-Bert, we talked about S-Bert, the middle school.
We'll handle S-Bert.
And there was, I just want to say, there was language in there about testing two grade levels, and I think you're testing one, right?
It's so nice, we put it in twice. We actually have to take it out once. It's in two different sections.
You always kind of forget that.
So...
In favor?
Aye. In favor? Aye, okay. Thank you for the explanation.
No problem, thank you for approving.
Thank you.
It was a very stubborn...
Drive safely.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Dennis.
No trash for you.
So that brings us to the approval of a proposed trip to Hartford, Maine.
Oh. My pleasure.
We're back.
Hi, your turn.
I didn't know, a few folks have seen this article. It came from, emanated from a call, and Judy Hesch and grabbed it for me, and I thought you might appreciate it. It really is the heart of what inspired me to do this trip. So, I mean, I connected to, I connected to Emerson and Thoreau, which is a, definitely a legitimate, you know, connection. They both had numerous essays on nature, and there's one on self-reliance that Emerson had that I think, I think also really hits the mark. We're also doing a, I'm sorry, it was on my teaching bucket list, but I'm finally doing it, which is a Native American unit for my, for my honors class. So between Twain and the Native American unit and Emerson and Thoreau, you know, it has a connection to the, certainly has a connection to the curriculum. But I think, you know, more than that, really, it was just a great time last year. Kids relaxed, the journal reflections were great. You know, they had to sort of make their own fun. We were out in nature, there was, nobody complained about not having a cell phone. We just sort of put the cell phones in the, or we planned to just put the cell phones in the glove compartment, so the drivers. I know that the school committee would prefer that we not have drivers, but to get up, it would be impossible to do it any other way. So we have five very responsible chaperones with SUVs, which you need to get up my road. So, um, it's pretty much the same trip as last year, just a few more kids, because it, it went, it went very well. So, if you guys have any questions, I think we've got everything taken care of. I'm fortunate to have Paul Macy, um, be involved with this, with me, uh, because he has access to all the equipment, and he's run several trips. So, I think we're, I think we're in good shape here.
Not required, it's voluntary, but it's?
That was my question.
Right.
What?
It's not required, it's voluntary, it's not a mandatory part of the curriculum.
Oh, no, right, absolutely, absolutely. And there's the extra credit journal reflection that they can do, that I'll also offer to the kids who don't go on the trip.
You have one female, one, two, three, four?
Five people total, so it'll be four, about four kids a car. And Katie Curran is, is, uh, been a great addition to the, the staff. She's, um, in the specialized department, and she's a track coach, so she'll know some of the kids, and, so hopefully that'll be, that'll be fun as well. And I guess she'll be the last one, so, yeah.
Just because you're retiring, Jerry, doesn't mean you can't run the track.
Thank you.
Any motion?
Yep.
Good question.
I'm happy to move that we approve the trip to Hartford, Maine on June 10th and 11th for sophomores, um, as presented by Mr. Skinder, provided all necessary paperwork is in order, and the superintendent has authority to cancel the trip in case of adverse circumstances.
And a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
And that brings us to the increase in?
Pay rates.
Substitute pay rates. So, this is not just teachers, correct?
Correct, this is teachers and nurses.
Okay.
And clerical substitutes, all the substitutes are listed. Um, Mr. Walsh has provided a recommendation for substitute pay rates for the 17-18 school year, um, and we're recommending that each of the ISS categories increase $5, uh, on the per diem rate, um, and then, the one major increase is nurse substitutes. We're having a very, very hard time getting nurse substitutes. He's suggesting that we increase that by $10 per day, um, uh, and then move the long-term sub to the B1 level. And so, the recommended vote is to approve these personnel rate recommendation increases as presented for 17-18, with the exception of the nurse substitutes, and that's an immediate, uh, request for, uh, increase. The, in order to be competitive for local districts, we need to, to increase it immediately.
For FY '17?
For FY '17.
Through the end of the school?
Just, just for the end of the school year, not retroactive.
Not retroactive.
So, the problem is that if we can't find a nurse substitute, because we have some students who have it written into their IPs that they need a nurse or an LPN, then we have to go to a, an agency and pay three times as much. And so, it, if you don't have to go to the agency one day, it pays probably for the whole increase. Is there anything I've forgotten to?
So, just around the nurses, this just makes us competitive geographically, um, and obviously less, a lot less in the agency, but it also keeps you from having to cancel events sometimes, and you can't, just can't get coverage.
And what is the, the rate now?
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars an hour, and it's going to thirty?
It has been for a long, long time.
Okay, I believe.
What are some of the competing community rates?
Twenty-nine to thirty-five. So, just, just, just the ones that are contiguous to us are all twenty-nine to thirty-one, you know, thirty-two, so we'll be right, right in the range.
Okay.
And this is for registered nurses, so?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about the I, so our ISS, the way we handle substitutes is, I don't know how unique it is compared to other districts, is it pretty unique?
Yes. It's probably the only one that does that globally.
So, how, does anybody know, how does, how does Sean come up with that recommendation, given structurally how different ISS is?
So, it was, it's part of a, it's the third year of a, uh, five-year plan.
Okay.
To try to increase by $5 per year. In the first couple of years, we absorbed it in some changes to the, uh, because we used to really only have two grades, there was ISS was seventy dollars, and then anybody that did under forty days in the long-term sub was also seventy dollars, and over forty days was when you went on step or column, uh, what, I'm sorry, just, uh, step one, but column, masters or ma, ma, masters. And we just weren't competitive, it was hard to keep people. We oftentimes had to pay someone their TA rate to do, uh, to do the long-term sub. So, this is part of a plan that's happened over time. The first few years, they were paid for with the, uh, to the other pieces, because now it just takes longer to get on stepping, uh, to step one.
Yeah.
On per diem. And then this year is just the third year of that five-year plan, so we expect to come back a couple more times, uh, in the future, just to get that rate up. Again, it was seventy dollars for as long as anyone can remember. And then, you know, we do, we couldn't afford to do it all at once, because it cost about $20,000, but, uh, being able to step into it, it was.
Got it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a quick one, um, so, I'm hoping they can at least ballpark this one. So, what do you think the impact is on 17 for that sort of urgent one, and what's the assumption in 18's budget versus the impact of this change?
So, it's in, it's already included in 18, assuming the change was gonna happen. For 17, um, tough to say, but the impact will be better, because we won't have to contract. So, if, if, if we pay the rate, uh, four, four out of the five times, and contract once, we're gonna save, we're gonna save some significant money there. I would say, it, when we calculated out the sub piece, we expected to expend all of the money. I think if we get this through, we may not have to, maybe a little bit there. Well, a better idea, obviously, is June. The big thing is with field trips and things like that, that come at close to the end of the year, the nurse has to travel, and you have a nurse in the building. So, that's really where it would, this is just a creative way to do it. You know, Benny Britt's been working on a long time with Sean about, how can we, you know, is it really that, it's just the dollars? You know, we, we share the same people with the surrounding towns, so.
Tough lines. Can I ask Chris's different, Chris's question in a slightly different way? Is this something you could encumber?
Yeah, so we've assumed we're gonna spend all of the, uh, sub money, so, if you were to look at the sub line in there, you'll see that it, it projects out to be spent 100%. I think with this, it may not, there may be a little bit of money left in there, um, because we're just assuming that we're gonna have to use the agency a few times. The fewer times we have to use the agency, the safer that money comes off.
Okay, so it's baked into this report?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the old, whatever it is, and having to use the agencies.
Thank you.
Are we, uh, can I have a motion then?
I'm happy to make a motion, that we vote to approve the substitute teacher pay rates for the 2017-18 school year as presented.
Second. What, do you want to do both at the same time? Does it matter?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we do them both?
Uh, yeah, you can do both.
And that we vote to approve the substitute nurse rates as of May 23rd, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On, on that note, just, uh, are we're still moving forward with adding additional FTEs for nursing rates?
So, in the budget, we have a slight increase at the high school, uh, for the increased population for nursing. There are a lot of competing demands for our available FTEs in the budget, um, and we'll have to look at where we land, um, in terms of additional sections of courses, uh, and so, uh, we're, we still haven't made a final decision. We've, we've budgeted for a slight increase in nursing at the high school. I'm hoping that we'll be able to accommodate that. The request from the department directors, as it happens every year, for additional teaching FTEs, is much higher than I had budgeted for. And so, the increased efficiency of how we're scheduling the high school, um, should enable us to be able to add fewer than they expected. They made the request before the schedule was completed, based on their sort of best guesses. So, I don't have a final recommendation for you yet, but, um, I'm always committed to meeting our bottom-line budget, and so, uh, it's likely we'll add, I think we had point seven or point eight FTEs for additional core classes, and the request is always three times that, so, it's a kind of a negotiation with the directors. Is it a need or a want? Uh, is it, uh, are we going to run very small classes? Those are all hard choices that we make in scheduling.
So, I respect you and Dennis's ability to use your discretion in making the best choices. I will say, as a school committee member, that I strongly recommend, um, that we make sure that our ratios are low for nurse to students, as we, and perhaps more so than our teacher to student ratio in any given class.
I get it, that's good, that's a good signal to hear.
And is it any help that you have the schedule done a little earlier?
Yes. So, we have the, we have the first run of the schedule, we're still on track to have it substantially completed by the end of the school year, and so, um, it's always difficult, because anything that we add would be part of a person, and hiring somebody to teach one or two sections is always difficult to find a high-quality person, but we're working through that piece, so, um, any other questions?
So, moving on, um, the minutes, I, I think, Chris and I just have some questions on the May 9th minutes, both, both of them. One that I, that occurred to me, just as I was, just this afternoon, so if we could go ahead and, um, you know, go ahead with the April 25th minutes, but wait till next time for the May 9th minutes, I'd, I'd like to do that.
So, I'm happy to make that motion, that we approve the April 25th minutes as presented, and, as well as the May 9th minutes of our executive session.
I actually have a question on those two, so.
Both of them?
May 9th entirely.
Oh.
From next time.
Scratch that, I propose we approve the April 25th minutes as presented.
Just one correction, uh, on page one, I'm absent, and page six, I'm making a second motion. Might be another Chris.
Whoops. Might be another Chris.
Yeah, we'll change that to Mr. Nixon.
Which page?
Six.
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 I'm glad you caught that.
Yeah, good catch.
Good catch.
Your adjournment.
Thank you. So, with that correction, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, then we're moving to the? Financial report? Which is John?
Thank you. So, as you can see, um, financial report is through April 30th. Bottom-line unperformed balance for the operating budget is around $6,000, just over. Uh, that's in the ballpark, the way we usually are. This time of year, I think our, our burn rate, as they call it, is, uh, gets a little bit slower, uh, this time of year, as we shut people off. Um, and then, as we get closer to the end of the year, nail down things like, uh, substitutes or, um, any extra service or anything like that, we, we can start to either release POs or talk more about what we're, um, looking to spend any of that money on. So, we're in the ballpark of where we usually are. For the grants revolving accounts, the grants are right on and, uh, expected to be spent as usual. We've got a little, uh, nuance now with the different ending, uh, timeframes for the grants, but that's, this is hopefully the last year, so Ellen won't have to talk about that over and over.
Okay.
Uh, next year. And then with the revolving accounts, the only one that sort of looks out of whack is the preschool tuition, which has, for the last few reports, uh, because of the, because of a timing issue. Uh, so we were able to nail down pretty much what the costs were gonna be through the rest of the year, the rest of revenues this year, so the revenues were a little bit less than expected, and, um, so we'll, we'll have to make a, a little bit in the, uh, general fund, I think it was like $4,200 or something like that. But that's been accounted for again, uh, it's already included in that $60,000, so, um, I expect all of them to end with a positive.
Just that on John again, hold there, Kay. That's the last, last page, 634.
Six thirty-four. So, you see a balance now.
We've been, we've been sort of holding back. We sent it out to every single parent in the district, um, and we sent it to FAN and some other groups to spread among their network, but does that answer your question? We're not asking elementary students.
No.
But, but...
And no more set, no more public sessions, weren't we, on surveys now?
No more, um, public sessions until the fall.
Okay.
At least until after graduation.
Graduations.
Graduations, yeah, so, fall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then the enrollment.
So the, uh, my intention originally was to, um, went to projected sections for next year, um, and give you a more complete sort of, uh, overtime three, five, ten-year enrollment report.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I have held back on the second part of the planned presentation because I want to be sure of the kindergarten numbers, because I'll be making some recommendations for open enrollment, and so I didn't want to jump the gun, uh, and just have you focus on the number of sections, uh, that we are projecting for next year, particularly with kindergarten being a little uncertain. Um, but I did want to give you some reassurance, uh, by comparing our January numbers to our May numbers, uh, that our student enrollment by school has not changed significantly in the last five months, and therefore I feel the January numbers were the ones we use to, uh, do the budget.
Okay.
Uh, and so, uh, in somewhere in that timeframe, and so I'm fairly confident, there may be some, um, slight shifts, an extra section of fourth grade here, one fewer of third grade there, but overall, the number of sections, I'm fairly confident that what, they will align with what I had originally projected, um, and that our budget will enable us to have reasonable class sizes, um, and, um, meet our needs, uh, district, across the district, and I want to give you a chance to ask questions about any of the, uh, individual school numbers, if you had that. I would also say that I'm anticipating opening more open enrollment seats than I did last year, um, because, uh, the one school I'm, uh, I remain concerned about is, you could probably guess, Lynch. Um, and Lynch is maxed out at twenty-four classrooms. Um, there is a possibility that we could have to go to five kindergarten classrooms at Lynch. Um, the numbers are kind of on the cusp, uh, and so, uh, that would be problematic. It may require moving a specialized program in order to gain space. Um, if we can encourage through open enrollment, some, uh, potential Lynch families to, to choose the smaller numbers at any of the other elementary schools, um, in terms of the class sizes being quite low, especially at the kindergarten level and some first grade levels, then, um, then that would help alleviate some of the overcrowding at Lynch. And so, overall, we had anticipated we would add an additional section of kindergarten, um, based on, um, thinking we would have more students because of the free full-day kindergarten program.
Mm-hmm.
That has not come to fruition at this point, although it's still early days, um, and it appears that, um, we will not need to add that additional section, but I'm still looking at numbers. So, um, keep you in a little bit in suspense, but we'll provide more information and also another look at the historicals to see whether the method used by the previous superintendent gives us any better data around projections than the method that I've used or that Flansburgh has used, um, and see if there's any additional number crunching that we want to do, just to be sure, especially as we're engaged in master plan, that we've got a good sense for where we're going and how many of our students will be staying with us who are already sitting in seats.
Okay.
Can we ask John a question?
You may ask.
John, typically, I seem to recall, there are a couple of schools where we tend to see later registration. I can't remember which ones they are. I could guess, but I can't reme-
Morocco and Lynch.
What?
Morocco and Lynch.
Morocco and Lynch. So I wonder, and is there any flexibility that we have with people who register late to ask them to attend other schools in the open enrollment pool?
If we still have open enrollment seats, we can offer them that opportunity, but they have to, we have to-
It's not mandatory, yeah.
Provide a space in the school where they should be. I have to say, I've had an increasing number of parents who have already written me emails asking to either stay at their current elementary school because they're moving within town, um, or, um, because of, uh, the way the districts are defined, they live closer walking to another school and would prefer to go to that school, and so I've really hesitated to, for, to meet those requests for convenience sake, um, because I can't do it for everybody. So, um, I think the school committee has a policy on open enrollment and it, I always have the ability to make exceptions if there truly is an exceptional situation, and generally it's for the good of the student in terms of social, emotional well-being, and that's really the, not for family convenience, but, um, I'm asking principals to look hard at identifying where the available seats are and trying to have some flexibility. So, there are available seats at almost every school at some grade level, because there are some, um, grade levels where the, we went to an additional section, but it made, made the class sizes were lower, rather than having twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, we went to four sections, which are lower, and so there's seats there. So, it's a little bit of a, once you open that door, um, it is a little bit of a risk that you'll have a lot more requests than you can accommodate, but, um, we really are trying to balance class size across the district, and that's the effort, and it's more complicated this year, but we'll do our best.
I would, if, if I may, I would politely suggest an asterisk, though, with that state, the next-to-last statement you made when you said we have seats available, and I, then you clarified why, so when, sometimes we have to add that section, so then that class size drops. So, we could add seats and stay within our class size guidelines, but we have some schools where we've added those classrooms in spaces that were not intended for classrooms. So, I understand and agree with what you said, but that brings me back to the three classrooms we just fit up at VO. So, eager to talk about open enrollment and other ideas you have, you know, at the next meeting. Uh, also, just in terms of timing, I think our, what, what our past practice has been to offer open enrollment in June, early June, and it was not standard practice for the superintendent to literally have a meeting to talk about it, although that happened when we voted open enrollment following redistricting, because part of redistricting was to offer grandfathering, you'll remember. So, so, once the superintendent understood which families were opting for redistricting, we had a better sense of the, let's say, efficacy of, of the map. So it took a couple of years, right, to kick in? So the superintendent sort of held court in this room and said, "We're offering open enrollment, happy to explain it," and so forth. My sense was that was very well-received, because there, there were a lot of misconceptions about what open enrollment was and why it was necessary, um, and because you really, you put yourself out there with superintendent chats, um, might be something for you to consider, particularly as, as we sort of run out of time on this, um, maybe an opportunity to dispel some myths or hit some points home.
Sure. So I guess one of the things I'd like to do is if there are any suggestions or things that you found helpful around the more thorough enrollment report projections, you know? Okay. Thank you. No questions on any of these numbers?
It's good to know they haven't changed much from January.
And it's good to know, I mean, as you, I think, said during the year that, you know, people leave and people arrive, so this is kind of a sum total of all of that shifting around.
Right.
Once upon a time, I think we had twenty-three, I think we had twenty-three kids register at Morocco during the month of August. It was one, one crazy year.
Yeah.
Two years ago, literally, the whole classroom.
Yeah.
Add an extra class.
During the summer. Um, but I, I appreciate your going back and looking at Bill's models, 'cause he spent a lot of time on them, and, you know, more information is better than less.
Yep. I don't really have anything to report.
Could you say something about the meat presentation last night?
All right. Well, we did that. It's over, but, you know? Okay, yes, we had a very, very nice-
Let me rephrase. You want to talk about the Q and A afterwards? I thought there were very good questions.
I was going to say, we had a very good, um, community meeting on the master plan update last night at, uh, the high school. Um, Flansburgh was there and, and Judy and Chris and Flansburgh all presented different pieces of it, and, um, it was not a huge, hugely attended event, but the people who were there asked some really good questions, questions that really made us kind of look back at, at, um, you know, some of the decision, the, uh, sort of, the process that we had gone through, and, um, uh, I, I think that it was a really valuable, valuable exercise, and it was, um, taped by WindCam, not taped anymore, but recorded by WindCam, and I believe it's already, um, going up on their website, so that people who couldn't make it can, can, you know, watch it and stay up to date.
Anybody in the world on the worldwide web?
That's right. Does that cover it?
Okay. Was there a community discussion meeting that you went to?
Um, I went to the multicultural- Multicultural, yeah, another community gathering, um, and that, that was very well-attended and, um, enthusiastic as well, and I talked to them about some of the things we're doing, that they've been, um, you know, requesting or, or asking us about, around diversity and the, um, it occurs to me that, that Jennifer hasn't really presented all of this, or have you, about the Southern Poverty Law Center, um, teaching tolerance over the summer?
No, so typically, one of the June meetings, we do that little update where we give you all the things, all the things that are coming, um, but happy to talk about that piece a little bit. We, um, we, as you probably know, we survey constantly, um, not only the teachers for their interests and their needs, but also the evaluators in the district in terms of what they're seeing in the classrooms. So, um, one of our new teacher-required courses was always the Skillful Teacher, which is an awesome course, um, but a lot of our teachers that are taking that are the newer teachers that are reporting. They've had a lot of those academic pieces just recently coming out of their degree. Um, so we wanted to really shift the course to a course that we had said were some major district goals for us, um, and so we are, in fact, it began this afternoon. It was awesome. Um, we have forty people signed up, um, and it's a, um, graduate course where we're really trying to look at the whole child, and we're putting the three pieces, we're calling them the branches, is our new visual, um, of the same tree, um, putting the academic together with the social, emotional, and then we're kind of calling the third branch the, um, appreciation of diversity. And, um, there are pieces that will tie in with multicultural, um, with differentiated learning styles, with, um, social justice, with anti-bias education, and, um, we're bringing in the organization teaching tolerance from, um, the Southern Poverty Law Center, and they will do professional development as part of that course for all of our teachers that take that course, and they will also do other worksheet, workshops around, once we fly them in, um, they will do other workshops that other, um, teachers in the district that aren't necessarily taking the whole course, but are signing up for other workshops, helping students to have a voice, helping students to stand up, anti-bullying, all of those pieces, um, as part of just individual workshops for our teachers, and then we will embed those same themes and the same kind of anti-bias framework that they work with throughout the year in professional development and other opportunities for our teachers. So it's kind of a new initiative for us. So, as we told the teachers today, it is an experiment. We're getting messy, and, um, it won't be clean or beautiful, but it will be amazing, and we will take risks and try new things too. So, this is one of those things that we're doing, so.
So, uh, I asked Jen to do a presentation at the next meeting to talk about all of those summer, um, professional development, but about how many different registrations do we have for summer programs?
Uh, we have almost six hundred, actually, we have over six hundred registrations now for different workshops and things.
Just from our own teachers and support staff?
Yep.
Which is astonishing.
So six hundred plus different offerings?
So different things that people have signed up for.
Oh.
So, you know, um, some teachers sign up for one thing, some teachers sign up for four or five things, so.
And this is in district, as well as out of district offerings?
This is all in district.
This is all in district.
For the summer, yep.
Our teachers are learners, which is great.
Yeah, that's great.
When do our summer offerings for students get published?
So those have already been out.
Already out.
They're on the website.
On the website at the top, says summer enrichment.
Yep. There's summer enrichment, but there's also different camps. There's the two reading camps, and there's ELL camps, so.
Okay.
So just click on the link and-
Yeah, there's a series of links right on the very first page, very cool.
That's an email I missed.
Oh, well.
So I did have a share report.
Send another one, Susan.
Dragged it out of you. Um, superintendent report?
Yep.
Quickly, uh, want to comment, the strawberry pops, saw, I think I saw Mr. Nixon there, was awesome. It was great. Uh, lots of different coral and, um, at the high school, lots of different coral groups and, uh, different incarnations of musical groups, including small ensembles, orchestra, band, jazz band. And, uh, actually, Susan and I were there early before it was scheduled to start, and I thought there was background music playing, so I was just chatting, and then I heard applause, and I thought, "They're applauding for a recording?" And then I looked over and there were, a small group of students were doing what, um, Costello called, uh, prelude music. Um, and they were so talented, I thought they were recording, so there you go. Okay. And I think, tonight, were you not blown away by middle schoolers, the sound out of our middle schoolers?
They were.
Just astonishing. Yeah, they were great. Uh, Susan and I also attended the Rotary Dinner, um, for Bob Deering, where he was, um, recognized as citizen of the year for his many, many years of, uh, leadership in the EFPBC and our building projects, and that was a lovely evening.
Great job on the video, by the way.
Yes.
Great job to Phil Bellinoy, who, um, really put in a tremendous amount of work above and beyond expectations to, um, get some great old photos of Mr. Deering doing, um, uh, building-related
EFPBC-related, yeah.
Cutting ribbons.
Yeah.
Does it, so you're in there too, digging, you know, breaking ground and doing various things.
There's one of Jimmy Johnson with like a mustache or something. Go, check it out.
There you go, check it out. It's not on the website yet, but we'll put it up. Um, I met with the Middlesex superintendents, um, this week, and the, um, Lahey Clinic is sponsoring the cost for, uh, the, uh, middle, the twelve Middlesex dis-league schools, which are all our, like, kind of local communities, uh, to do an online youth risk behavior survey, where we're getting really good results very, very quickly, individual school results by gender, by grade level, um, and we will have those results by the end of the school year. Uh, and so that will help us plan for interventions, for professional development for teachers, uh, it'll influence our school improvement plans and our handbooks, uh, and so, and we'll be able to compare ourselves to the other eleven districts in the league, which is a nice, like, group instead of the whole state.
When you say they're sponsoring the cost, does that mean they're helping to defray the cost or they're covering the cost?
They're paying for the whole cost.
Oh.
Which is great. It's like forty or fifty thousand dollars.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's great.
So, we're, we're very happy to partner with them as a public health effort.
So we'll get the results earlier than we normally do, also?
Many, many months earlier, yes. But we'll still, you know, the Board of Health and the Coalition will also, I'll get, send the results right to them. We'll all work together to kind of analyze them, come into a presentation in the fall, early fall. Um, and just to let you know, I am, tomorrow night, I've been invited to speak at the Winchester Co-op Preschool, uh, so I'm going to talk about our district and, uh, what we're doing, and all of those parents who aren't with us yet will hear from me about the wonderful things in the Winchester Public Schools.
Great idea.
Can we give them the link for the survey?
I will be happy to give them the link for the survey.
That would be awesome.
What they're looking for twelve years from now with the graduate.
Well, that's what it's for.
That's what it's for.
You can send them the link to the master plan presentation and ask for their support. I'll be over, I can-
Well, I don't know how much you want to hit them with.
That's all I have for superintendent's report.
All right. So then our future agenda items are going to be open enrollment, a report on special education and co-teaching. The, um, I think the Special Education Parent Advisory Council will be at the same meeting as the preceding item. Uh, we need to talk about school improvement plans, uh, retiree recognition, which I guess, I guess we do every year, um, capital plan update, master plan update, actually, master plan, um, we are done updating or done just reporting on, we're going to actually really consider it and vote on it. Um, we have to finalize the fiscal eighteen budget, and then a, uh, a personnel update about, from, from Sean about-
Right.
-people coming in next year and what the staffing looks like. Uh, and that's the list.
That's the list.
If somebody-
Can I, can I offer, Susan, since not all of us have seen the, the latest master plan presentation, because that's going to be up on WindCam, it, it might be good for anyone who couldn't be there last night to watch that, particularly listen to the Q and A, because Flansburgh is perfectly happy to come sit with us when we're either ready to vote the master plan- to vote the master plan or if members feel like they have questions, to come and discuss those prior to voting the master plan. It's not a whole lot of time, given where we are at the end of the, of the project. So if members feel that would be useful, let Susan and Judy know, just so everybody's informed.
Okay.
Can I only ask too, that at some point we talk about the MCIA, the innovative assessment? I think it's interesting. If we're talking about school improvement plans, I assume at some point we're going to figure out what our district goals are?
Yeah. Well, I was thinking, I think I was thinking summer for district goals.
Because of the strategic visioning?
Yeah.
So, but the school improvement comes after that?
So I'm, I'm trying to work out the timing and whether we can defer the school improvement plans to the fall. Once the strategic visioning benchmarks are set and then our district goals are set, maybe it makes sense to check the school improvement plans against those, but...
And then I'll ask again, just that we do an update on what the Coalition's plans are for next year and what we're doing with them in our, each of our schools, so that it's a coordinated effort, a collaborative effort, and we're, the leadership's working with us and with them and the plan.
We'll have the survey ahead of time too.
The risk behavior survey, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay, so, next meeting, next meeting date is June 6th followed by June 20th. Got a lot to do between now and the end of the year.
We do indeed.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So I have to sign these. We're all invited, let's not forget.